[Musique] Niya djambé koma la nyé doulala wo Mesi wale ya jolélé ya longo eh ma la nyé Niya lomi befi si wale ya konna kola ite moya Jéréma du kare kanen nyamfa Ise mira koumala kanen nyamfa Saoula mwa le bako ma nina yensila Mwana boun tana ba le mou sahoule Janibé si saoufala fisi wale we Seloumo founa etan kélé fisa yani Bari dianfala le mati dianfala Dianfala le mati dianfala Mwené dianfala le mati dianfala Dianfala le mati dianfala Na teleka da nyola nou kri di di ma Ay moudou sou doumè akafon ye bye bye Na teleka da nyola nou kri di di ma Ay moudou sou doumè akafon ye bye bye Na teleka da nyola nou kri di di ma Ay moudou sou doumè akafon ye bye bye Wala rini ya Wolo ma ti ke doun yo la kote Ni rini ya Ali kaba la paso konyo we Ni ya betene Wolo ma ba la paso konyo mon kote Kianfasi yada Kianfasi yada Kianfasi yada Kianfasi yada
Yeah hello each and every one of you I think this guy Musa Janaboy is complaining that there are too many people That cannot see my Facebook Live I think something is wrong with my Something is wrong with my settings Something is wrong with my setting on my Click this star button So I don't know why do I have to click this star button But something is wrong with my view okay So I think I need to set something up Which I don't know but I will definitely do my best and work on it Janaboy in Embara I think na Facebook setting long So moya makà N'afon kona ni ba Facebook Live N'of notification no so the Or else n'angas post fannan Gal bukanyé so I don't know why But I think it's something to do with Facebook Or maybe with my setting But also longo you know Banu beshina watè amontara nou vaki shunole So ngomba nou kampanso N'kaba na si nola temfange N'akà e N'afakeshino diata baké But n'ataga mbia n'afakeshino enjoy ne baké Niwa to beko n'kabé ben si nola Because Gambiela system o mo la adopt So you know N'do n'ingame Gambenin siyad is about 8 hours different Gambia ke la siyad ukawuli N'kagambia ke la Of course something is wrong with your With your settings But malong settings Settings min dolo muya muya m'atina Mobé bukalo why But I will do my best and work on it So ngali alonoko N'kabè na Gambia le science antè Bari d'annimbida anzal won Alsa longo de chére tchapaché londo fankaso Na block buton Aba aktifré na binkanadian politiko la kumola And I hope Alsa na moiné akilola akana na mouni dousola Ni mouna bankola kolti Bankola koumbé la responsi Bilti la pour momo yé la Demanding kaya faye Bari m'inkombe n'indro l'talamba N'dila nyokon adi endo de N'tel tab na Facebook Fisouma territory la Fisouma territory la Mama fimi on Facebook Souma territory la You want to fuck with me? I block you right away So just to let you know this is my territory I do what I want on here Even Even me I don't see your posts Yeah I don't know why you guys are not seeing my posts But I've been posting But I think something is wrong with my settings That I will do my best and work on First of all Danimbida la I want to Congratulate Gambiela new vice president Ngamira is something yellow I don't even know the guy but you know President Baro is not dumb Yadé le M'foto vice president Vice president muya longo Pourka moudou soto ka replace Amay easy president President banuka jubirul ke doulabi la Mba djamali tombon D'uma le ba fitla nyimpa la sol So ba d'élè palaso tol biji Ni m'oke ndota muya n'ukama rita Amari ala doukouna adi endo de Akèkè m'ol bulu Akèkè president bulu Fango Niwo mari n'inga abodya Akèkè hatam le prou President m'osotou m'oumiala Aba replace la So be finally President m'okutota la ayat Tombon Gambiela new vice president I want to congratulate him But I don't know him You should You people should speak your mind As you also speak our mind No Mr. Sarr I want you to use your brain I do not say do not speak your mind You have the right to speak your mind But do not insult here You insult with me I fuck you right away Okay? You fuck with me here I'm gonna block you right away Okay? I hate when people are trying to counter attack me Okay? Don't be a fool I said what I said N'afon imandika kango la I said you This is about the Gambia It's about our country You can speak your mind let me speak my mind But do not insult So stop being a dumb Okay? Trying to Counter attack my question Before I fucking block you right now Okay? Don't fuck with me I don't take bullshit from nobody This is my territory Okay? I said ni mouna territory le You fuck with me Niya block right away Ngali alon View man ken na problem Because boss ban telebul View man ken na problem Okay? Okay So first of all Danimbida Niwa to beko na lawyer dabo jena fin di da Aba diya mola Aba nyin talip la nyin KMC KMC n'inga banyou l'area council la nyin Fraud investigation Left take jail tabika hit demand But there is one thing muya n'ukela prou M'ouliya understand ya Yadé le President ou l'ouais sembo diale Ouais sembo di president La prou n'inga corruption de doulat Damia longo They have enough evidence Pour ibadé la prou ya commission kaya fong di Yekiskis rouda ya ke di Yadé Wala tina l'aliya remember Yaya djame la masakunda kono I commission tala ayadida Pourka lawyer dabo la Pourka lawyer Dabo di faka namo d'ou Le faka amandaka namo d'ou Balbri yaya djame la masakunda youlou m'ndia Adi endo de yata ndilo koto N'atonya dabo mandraka tax diou Wala tine IEC Yele l'ouataya update Komomo muya la tax d'ulobé Eba tax n'inga l'ani image Dasana prion Yadé la There are a lot of Proof Muya longo president Baro sa use Sembo muya longo President Baro sa use Pour ibadé la lawyer dabo kanalo nyé election Ha Bari President Baro m'osoube use Kadou mbenga alonoko I ish le lawyer dabo Ya disqualified But hanoube President baraya obligé Just because just Just trying to maintain the peace Just trying to maintain the peace But mbenga alonoko L'ouale ya fo Constitution no barari kou Ita lo no la ni nene ya sharon Ni m'ou criminality Yamwe So We have all this evidence But be president m'ya obligé le rec Pour ayo Pour ni m'oume just to maintain the peace But adi endo de bi Wolo ya dabo kilou Wole na tdi Pourka talip n'inga Ala gangol také difèn Il a criminal ya ka bankola kodo muya longo Yata ya bateraya Which is unacceptable So adi endo de Ya commission kaya fong Lawyer dabo was agend di Lawyer dabo was agend di Lawyer dabo was Was here Jumping from one place to another Commission ni yakélé Imake koukrip krap M'ouna l'ali ya yaya djame la commission Pourka lawyer dabo la korda félé Yonoumè ya portman Fali ya l'afalma Lawyer dabo l'okorda Hanibé Korani boka namo d'ou Hanibé Gambian kolo So president n'inga sembo balà Pourka Pour la commission taka londi Ka talip nyola nyodn'ajou taka nyoube Yadé le Ku falo bijé Gambian kolo almandami long M'ar na kumas di Yadé le bi KMC dokoula le m'oumé Il a djokat trust bank Eka tchakou di la friboni Beka trust bank Yidé Bari b'ini talip si ya talip ya m'ouliya follow ke Talip baama wola tap realance Realance financial Talip djoubé di Sign instead of KMC Koldbele djokata trust bank ayakoundou Ayasamba min dolo realance bank Asamba realance bank Ka duka abama alta Ibadé la abama nyouta benefit Wokodola Gambian kolo alin la m'oudi Na alman la m'ouyè ngaré KMC be dokoula be electric only everything Be abonou trust bank Talip ben souda ya fale Because abama wola tap realance Bank di muya la kava realance Sign KMC koldbele dokoula Il a kodo li il a loan Il a krip krap obé kata min dolo True realance Abama le tabu di Ibadé la abama nyouta nafa wokodola Because of talip ben souda wola bijé Okay We talk blah blah without evidence Let go rec Not direct But I'll get you very soon Yadé Yadé le bi nou Watè omouna talip ben souda yoke Touba wokafoue Ni potisim Ni potisim bebe ni n'okona Kadou ite ya longo Ite le mayot Just because ite mayot di Yo sembo ta yo you sign Kodo m'ouliya la nyin bank Yo obondi di Yasamba baama la bank Pour ibama se nafa wola Gambian kolo alin la m'ouliya Talip ben souda mandanke di Talip ben souda ya n'aké MC Fo abama fo afama wola tap Aké MC di Alin la mouni akilou Akana na mouni son de m'oula Ngabo Ngabo ndali nou Fala l'afalma le bi nou KMC Il a internet o muya longo Wela kanaké MC il a compital Talip ben souda la brother Wala Wela tap blue I think for blue style For blue realance I got all the paperwork With me I think But something blue style Muya long Wela internet already Instead of gantè le kadi Gantè be tama dabi Gantè le ba di Afon la brother la tama company I went a ayakamana wo So ala brother la company Wela KMC dakà best sublining Kabé dakà sublining Kodo m'ouliya n'ikara Gambiela posso Saouka ta ala brother la posso N'abadi ngambiakou Alin la mouna akilou akana na mouni son de m'oula Ni potisim ba min dolo Gambian kolo alin la m'ouliya Ni criminal on le soto Talip ben souda hadé fès m'ouliya longo M'ouliya m'la m'arm Aloko Ver professional fès wala ba Niya talip dakà behif n'ami Ani m'ouliya la abakiri amankiri Sign KMC be il a indi Be il a internet o talip ben souda la brother N'amar wola foun Mohamed ben souda di Wola ba di ronka Be yoko ndako di wola Wola ke be staff ni internet only everything Alia l'akor corruption oké di di Fatima Martin Fenge foun Maria Martin Madame Martin Chonko Il a CEO Ifo ha wayon kodota ayandudnyat Ha Tonya Ha Bari koukrim bijé CEO ko Akwa ati di Kodou amandudnyat Ala boss ya ki mouna aywaleke So ni talip ya l'onga aseni yatele Talip ya l'onga amansou ya roke Talip ya l'onge ni kamoufou Fani abidé N'inkombo commission tala nganafon Talip ko Ou si n'ala ndoukou la But ateni wama tadi Who the fuck is talip? Pourka fante di karimantadi Faké l'omari ke di Tax pay ya la kodo Iké diou Including me Na tax kodo muya longo kado Iké diou Tax pay asla kodo iké diou Who the fuck is talip? Pour talip kafou Ni fatou manda di Ni ndamba manda di Ni l'afakou le be fansou Company la yaya yele si la soko la There you are the CEO of that company But as long as ibadé oké MC You cannot tell the Gambian people That I cannot work with Damba If you don't like it Recite and get the fuck out Yadé le Niwa to beko na For alba NPP la platform Alba follow kani ba Keitou l'abé fin di kana doma doma Keitou M'ouliya l'ongo Fifty thousand Ke m'ou boja djoubé Five hundred thousand One million Gambian kola mola namu One million dollars Kontako yola di Fifty million Set up Martin a kaitou bonde sa From one million But fifty million What a malafin dakaitou la Ika NPP l'inga platform Mbaka itou be souda kana M'paré follow di Mb'politikwa to l'okona nganabadi ngambiakou From thirty million Sorry From one million Fifteen million Wela nada fin di So sa ni fifteen million de woli Ala Tonya founi alé biya Nimba Tonya fala ala Tonya foun Wela na talip m'asou prou m'ouzo ni m'ourum na N'ana criminal ya kodo Fa le m'ouliya le yowaleke M'ouzo ni na officer ya l'compital bijé Compital di Etan ya tara compital di Compital di D'uma l'compital clean Investigé solal beba fata la di ma fong bien Iké oké o compital le clean Ibadé la wela na talip la brother Wela na talip ya la brother kambanang De ibadé la diang Ni talip ya gambian kola kodo ta ayabata Alabroda bina la ay talip ta ay safe Aba talip safe la n'ami Wela ni ndiko Il a compital kolo M'ouliya moun dundijé ita clean nou Wela na CEO l'officer de compital m'ouliu bijé Yo compital ta yebé bonde sa Yes senyan di di ma fong Etat de mon compital di Sa compital di D'uma la bonde di D'uma l'order di Pour iti o compital bonde di Okay sa Comptable félé Si on a computer Comptable la pruké di Wala talip Wala ayala brother ta ayakambanang Ani m'ouba la bakili fakili Pour wela marana internet l'okola Ibadé la di Na compital Ibadé bi Comptable kola Ibadé la Alin la mouna akilou akana na mouni dousola Talip ben souda yé le ke Alabroda Wela na b'ring CEO Tada l'officer de iman compital tare di Investigé solan You know I spoke to One of the Amari Ni anyo senyo akilola Sign okay no problem Officer félé D'uma le abondi Fatou gaté la abondi D'uma le di pour ya abondi Number two Okay sa Comptable fangole Madame Martin Program olé D'uma longo compital nyin da ay a efacé N'gaté la abondi D'uma longo information Ayabondi compital kono Abi wasen ya le Wala n'kale kota ni ben souda Criminality M'ouliya di He knows exactly how to cheat And how to lie To Gambians Nimba Tonya foun Ni mouna bankola quality Company l'ouna longo Ite natale Yé a Gantè le tare di Yela brother ta ayakamana di Wala na b'idi Talip ben souda ka KMC dakà run Kombla kaba na fawole tamu di Wala ala family business I will tasa K AKM citala ayakala family business One na bi M'odobidi Akwa m'una na b'likama Area council I make I make We are talking more than 100 million Rahim Ali Glou One hundred million Rahim Ali Glou B'ring atala ya koha N'de di Manke account note Sign m'amourunale Ngamira di kaitou tol bijé di Abana souda Yani ni kawala di M'oula dokou la Dokou la Quade kage risido M'oula wesi di ya Akwa amale Maybe avatarala di O al office D'uma l'omourunale Il a Il a Banyou si di council Etad akadou di youbé Falling out We are talking about 100 million We are talking about 100 million Yadé le indi Gambiela Gambiela National Assembly kou Rahim Ali Glou Jele follow off Wokodola douna min dolo le m'ouman Kodo d'oufana Touba wu d'oumiala Ekoko almost fifty million Pour ban d'ouna m'ouzo Wokodola fana ngamere Alia m'ouzi d'ouna Gambiela belongs to all of us What is wrong is wrong What is wrong is wrong Nimba Tonya N'angatonya foun l'oplatikou We talking about 100 million Rahim Ali Glou Wola ta ayasouna Atata di di N'aman hanfenni ta Ayafé di m'ouliya la I sense make Ngamira foun next week Saman kote Anyan takata purka bukou Purka kaitou Kevé kambanang Rahim Ali Glou Yadé le science Fast track investigation Fast track Investigé I'm demanding I think a little Fast track investigation Lawyer dabo ma level fast track investigation I alonoko Ni kweba investigate Is not good for talip Wala lawyer dabo nyouwou Woulou m'obela Falling out taban Gambian kola na flout Talip ya wola KMC Ayarun Aba amala bank Pourka damabodi Niwa longta Aba amala bank Long m'ouliya la abaké MC Aba KMC Aba talé M'oumiala emu tax pay M'ouliya la ba KMC Talip ya l'ouna m'untah Woulou n'inga Yaya djame foun l'masakunda Woulou foun imata Is going to take MC One of forty years Pour kolo ndio Forty years Pour KMC yolo ndio Ali m'élou m'ubé Wema l'ouna Talip yolo ndita M'balit Ni soko m'balit boso M'balit senta m'ouna Wori souda ngambe Asante company Investigation Yalong asante Bring another portal Port Yadé le ni masakunda Masakunda katali Dosier b'ini Yaka itou b'ini They have enough evidence against you Then be Hitler Wana be talip ya Aba podin podin We are ready Kaitou m'ouliya long Souda dosier m'ouliya la Wola fin di M'abadi ngalimba tu bang Tell me why M'ouliya long Ni kiskisiral boulo si la woulou Yata ndiko Two million D'ora talip la account Nimba l'epro Two million Wola di Talip ben souda la account Il a nim fankou But I'm still demanding M'ala foun ni Ala ni read l'èban Fala read Ni non kaitou l'ouna Ni le boda KMC Kiskisiral ni l'oule bebou Ni non original kaitou di M'ouliya longo Talip la side obide CEO la side obé ma Ala ni talip How manakana di On takentè Talip ya l'omé CEO boulo Talip boulo But talip l'atale Pou Yakuwé la CEO Hey CEO fana kou I will go down But I will not go down alone I attend the CEO I will go down But I will not go down alone Because you are my boss We did it together Why are you going to the national assembly? You are telling them She is the one who did it My CEO Why you? Why me? CEO ko Why me? You know we did it together CEO Kaitou m'ouliya le be fè I made talip la side Talip ya approve For CEO Malangambiakou CEO CEO cannot do anything Without Without the knowledge Of talip ben souda Now the CEO is back to work right? Yeah Let's see You like it or you don't like it You're gonna work with her Because she is the CEO Where are the document? If you take a document anywhere Without the signature of her They're gonna return that document back You cannot tell the government Who the fuck you should work with We are the one who will tell you Who the fuck is talip? Ekambiakou la kodo Yé wola kodo Yabatera Eka m'abou Ni account Without my boss So be long I'm going to load on now You are Now You are throwing me under the bus You are throwing me under the bus Wela na CEO Apology See There is nothing like I am apologizing
There is nothing like I am apologizing. There is nothing like I am apologizing. Taliban is going down. We are not going to do it. Taliban is here. We are not Taliban. We are not doing it. 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 See, we are not doing it. 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 But we are not doing it. Because we are not doing it. But we are not doing it. He has a lawyer. He has a million dollars. And he is not paying taxes. Taliban is not paying taxes. We are not paying taxes. After that, he is not doing it. He is not doing it. But Taliban is not doing it. The CEO is not doing it. Hey, CEO is not doing it. Without knowledge. Without knowledge. Of Taliban. I don't know if I can make it. I can't do it. CEO is not doing it. CEO can't do it without the. No, I can't do it. It's not done. But we are not doing it. Now, I will tell you. I will tell you. Attorney, attorney, I think. I will tell you. Man, with the right channel. I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it. But I can't do it. 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 But CEO is not doing it. He is not doing it. He is not doing it. He is not doing it. But he is not doing it. I will tell you. I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it. We are not doing 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 it. It is corruption. We are not doing it. But we are not doing it. But we are not doing it. 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 Because we are not doing it. We are not. We are not doing it. What is wrong? Corruption is not doing it. We are not doing it. Have you seen Ukraine? They are saying. They are saying. Ukraine is not doing it. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. Ukraine is not doing it. Ah, we are not doing it. We are not doing it. Corruption is not doing it. Have you heard? We are not doing it. 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 Money. But corruption is not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Donald Trump, he is not doing it. Corruption scandal. Donald Trump is a charity. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. I have done it. I have done it. A million dollars. I have done it. On behalf of the charity. But I can't do it. Corruption is not doing it. We are not doing it. Donald Trump is not doing it. So I can't do it. But I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it. Donald Trump, I have seen Saudi Arabia. We are not doing it. Eighteen million. I have seen Saudi Arabia. We are not doing it. We are investigating. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. And the prince. We are not doing it. 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 America is not doing it. America is investigating. It was. For. And we are not doing it. The prince is not doing it. I like it. The prince is not doing it. Donald Trump is not doing it. Donald Trump is not doing it. But Donald Trump, have you heard? We are not doing it. Toilet area. I am not doing it. I think Donald Trump killed. Bring. Bring it on. I interviewed him. I think the prince is not doing it. I think he is not doing it. Ah, 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 ah. He is not doing it. He is not doing it. It's unacceptable. At the end, you marry. You can't do it. But you can't do it. I don't want to do it. We are not doing it. What is wrong? It's wrong. So corruption is not doing it. This guy is saying too many corruption is. Ah, ah, too many millions goes missing. Too many millions goes missing in that country. So the investigation should start from the top. Where? We are not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Bring it on. Bring it on. I can't do it. I can't do it. I can't do it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Talk about it. Do you hear me? Talk about it. But you have Facebook. I will never have it. I'm not on Facebook. Now, I get. I am not doing it. This man is corrupt. Fabi is corrupt. Where are the fucking evidence? You see corruption? You are a gambian. You are a concerned gambian. Talk about it. That country belongs to us. But even we are not doing it. Here, Adam Barrow corrupt. Where are the evidence? KMC, who is the one who is doing it? KMC, who is the one who is doing it? Bank, who is the one who is doing it? Ah, 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 ah. Concerned bank, who is the one who is doing it? They are. They are not doing it. They are not doing it. They are not doing it. Okay. You have been accused of 35 million goes missing. Fast mother, ah, ah, fast mother, ah, ah, Barrow. Let me make that clear. Okay? We are not doing it. President Barack, ah, 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 ah. We are not doing it. 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 I am not doing it. We are not doing it. So they use fat matter, Barbaros account for. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Lawyer, you are not doing it. President Barack, President Barack made that point clear. We are not doing it. Lawyer, President Barack, who is not doing it. Who is not doing it? But lawyer, who is not doing it. Who is not doing it? So who is not doing it? I am not doing it. So President Barack, who is not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. So we are not doing it. Fast mother, Barbaros account for. We are not doing it. Yeah, yeah, we are not doing it. President, he is not doing it. He is not doing it. That, ah, that point is been clear. President Barack, who is not doing it. He is not doing it. Media, they are sorry. If fast mother, ah, 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 ah. Barrow, who is not doing it. President, ah, lawyer, who is not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. Who is not doing it? Who is not doing it? Account, it is not doing it. Foundation, it is not doing it. Who is not doing it? Because they are traveling. So we are not doing it. In case, we are not doing it. We are not doing it. You have it. So sign them. So sign them. We are not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. There are money missing. But Facebook, what? As a concern gambian. It is not doing it. You have to do it. Then, gambian, you are not doing it. But I can't do it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. Ah, 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 ah. We are not doing it. 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 We are not doing the responsibility. When is it? Talk about it. Come out. Facebook, we are not doing it. We are not doing it. Social media, socialize long. You have it. But at the end, as a concern. As a concern, you are not doing it. You have evidence. But we are not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not, ah, 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 ah. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. Gambian belongs to all of us. They don't want to tell the truth. And you are not. Um, they are, they go double about that 35 million. They are, okay, but they are. Those people, they do not want to tell the truth. They are people, they can go ask double about that 35 million. Have you heard? Ah, 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 ah. I am not lawyer, who is not doing it. Lawyer, who knows about it? While the person, Barack, who is not doing it. Person, Barack, who is not doing it. Can you believe it? Lawyer, who knows about it? I can't do it. Fast mother, Barbaros account for. It is not used for bringing amount. We are not doing it. President Barack, who is not doing it. But I can't do it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. We are not lawyer, who is not doing it. Eighteen million. We are not doing it. Fast mother, Barbaros. We are not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. So I hope you are not doing it. When I can, gambian, they are dead. We are not doing it. We are not doing the responsibility. Bring it. What is it? We are not doing the responsibility. Bring it. But we are not doing it. We are not doing it. I follow up stuff. We are not doing it. You have it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. I talked to insider. We are not doing it. Ah, ah, social security. Social security, we are not doing it. We are not doing it. I have insiders. We are not doing it. Social security in the Gambian. You are doing it. Social security, it is not doing it. It is not doing it. How many Gambians be whatever tax taken by you in the Gambian? We are not doing it. Social security. You are not doing it. But we are not doing it. I can't do it. President Barack, who is killing. You see something? Say something. You see something? Say something. But I am not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. I am not doing it. Because I am not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Why Donald Trump, the trouble, will be? Because, because concern citizens, we are not doing it. I am not doing it for three to four different kind of court. We are not doing it. Donald Trump, we are not doing it. Ah, 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 ah. We are not doing it. Gambian, we are not doing it. But I am not doing it. We are not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. Fast mother, 35 million. I am not doing it. I can't do it. President Barack, who is bringing campaign, you can not do it. Campaign, you can not do it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. Eighteen million. I am not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. I can't. I can't do it. Okay. We are not doing it. Lawyer, who is last video. Lawyer, who is last, ah, ah, last year, I put Adam Barrow, my second. Adam Barrow, lawyer, who is not the people toilet. You want to have video, who is not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. Because gambian, we are not doing it. I am not doing it. It is not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. Lawyer, who is last year in office, many people to. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. Because gambian, we are not doing it. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Because gambian, we are not doing it. I am not doing it. Lawyer, who is not doing it. We are not doing it. Taliban, who is not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. KMC belongs to all of us. KMC belongs to all of us. I am a taxpayer at KMC. I am a taxpayer. And I am a citizen of the Gambian. That bank belongs to all of us. But I can't see. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Taliban, who is not doing it. Ah, 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 ah. KMC, who is not doing it. KMC, who is not doing it. Trust Bank. Taliban, who is not doing it. I trust, ah, 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 Taliban. Who is not doing it. I, ah, ah, KMC, who is not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. Obama, who is not doing it. Taliban, who is not doing it. Taliban, who is not doing it. Yeah, KMC, who is not doing it. Trust Bank. K, saying, Taliban, who is not doing it. I am not doing it. Obama, who is not doing it. Who is not doing it? We are not doing it. We are not doing it. Credit Union. We are not doing it. Ibrahim, for Ibrahim, I am not doing it. You need to go and provide proof. You have it. You are, ah, you, you, you just join us right now. You see? So we are not doing it. We are not doing it. Attorney, I paid you. I am not doing it. I got all the evidence. I am not doing it. These are the paperwork from Ghana. He is a stamp player. He is a stamp player. One of those, we are investigating. Ah, 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 ah. I can't find it. I can't find it. I can't find it. I can't find it. So we are not doing it. I joined the Facebook. Science, I am not doing it. I am not doing it. I can't jump into conclusion. I can't find it. But I don't have enough of them here. I can't pay you. I can't pay you again. So we are not. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. You have it. I am not doing it. I can't do it. I do better than my second. Because we are not doing it. We are not doing it. I can't do it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. I am not doing it. Ah, if you are not doing it, you are not doing it. I am not doing it. Because you have it. We are not doing it. We are not doing it.